What's that? You know what, I, that one week, was it last week?
Yeah, that's why I'm eating.
I couldn't run at all because I had these every single night, was it last week? And you know what, it's like starting all over again. Oh, it's awful, just awful.
What's that?
Okay, is everybody, everybody ready?
Yeah, we do, just, but we just do the Darian Dash.
I'd like to call our city council meeting to order and ask everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll please. Belkey?
Here.
Belzak?
Here.
Kenny?
Here.
Marques?
Here.
MacIver?
Here.
Shower?
Here.
Seifert?
Here.
Seven present. We have a quorum. The next item on the agenda is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. This is an opportunity for the, for the audience to speak to the city council on any item. It doesn't have to be an item that's on the agenda this evening. So if anyone would like to come up and speak to the council at this time, please feel free to come forward. And let's move on to the approval of minutes. The minutes for the August fifth, August 5th city council meeting, do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Seifert. During the work session, we did amend the, the minutes to include more information on page four regarding the cell tower that we're, that is being built over on the public horse facility. Any other discussion on the minutes? The roll please. Shower?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Epstein.
MacIver?
Epstein.
Five ayes and two abstentions. The minutes have been approved. The next item is receiving of communications. Do any, Alderman have communications to share? Alderman, Kenny?
Hi, I'm one, Madam Mayor, good evening. Charlene Cooglan on the 1500 block of 71st Street had contacted me regarding dirt in front of the, front of the house. Apparently one of the utility companies had come by and had been there for a long time without fixing it. So I had Mr. Gombach take a look at it and we've rectified the issue. And I, I guess since, you know, I'd like to remind residents if they see something in front of their parkway, just to call the, the city, you know, feel like they have to wait, you know, two years. And, because sometimes it's the city's, your responsibility is sometimes it's a county or even maybe, you know, a utility. In this case it was a utility, but at least we were able to get the problem rectified. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman MacIver?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I, um, I think everyone received a communication on July 16th from Patrick Donaldson inviting folks to come out to the Aurora Sportsman's Club. And I just wanted to thank him and his wife. I took them up on their offer and they provided me with a hands-on educational experience on gun ownership. So I did want to, you know, mention that.
Very good. Alderman Belkey?
I received a complaint from, and I gave it to the chief about a van that's been sitting at the parking lot where Red, Red Tuddy's is, along Plainfield there. It's a white van with flat tires and it's been sitting there since January. So I didn't know if, you know, you had any news on that.
What, what was the location?
In the parking lot where Teddy's Red Hots is.
I didn't get that, Alderman. I will, I will definitely take a look into it, but I did not get it.
Okay.
It's a white van, you said?
White van, yes, flat tires. It's parallel to Plainfield.
It's in the lot, though.
Mm-hmm.
Parallel, okay. Other communications? Let's move on to the mayor's report. The first item, I, it always gives me great pleasure to recognize residents of, of Darien and with, who have some pretty terrific accomplishments. And tonight we have the honor of, of recognizing Darah Povar in recognition of achieving the top 2% of her class of, of 650 students at Downers South High School with a grade point average beyond 4.0. So Dar, I'd like you to come up and accept this, this certificate of recognition from, from the city council. And if you'd like to say a few words? Congratulations. It was nice to meet you. And I always love to see all of our young people come forward to us with all these, these honors. So I think everyone wants to shake your hand here. Good luck to you. What year are you in?
Um, I'm just graduated.
Oh, did you? Okay. Why don't you go to the microphone and tell us where you're going to school?
Okay. Hello, everybody. I'm going to Loyola University. I'm actually moving in tomorrow, which is very exciting.
Yes.
I'll be majoring in psychology and I've never been here before and it's very interesting to see how our city really communicates and comes together to solve our issues. So, thank you so much for all the work you do.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And good luck. Are you going to be living up on the north side or?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll be up near downtown.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, Claire, did you get a picture? You know what, yeah, I, should I come down? What, maybe, I forgot that you were going to take a picture.
Sure. Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, ooh.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't want to think about it yet. I don't know, it's going to be hard.
Okay, okay. I cry on the person.
Oh, yeah, that's a gimme.
And Claire, you're not done yet. Under the mayor's report, we have Clara Bon Giovanni to present our updated Darien Chamber update.
Good evening, everyone. The Shop Local Shop Darien campaign has been very successful for participating Chamber businesses. The following restaurants will be offering an ongoing 10% off preferred offer. Eodaki Sushi and Steakhouse, Chuck's Southern Comfort Cafe, Home Run Inn, Jet's Pizza, Q Bar and Grill, and Zazo's Pizza, and the list will be growing. Culvers will be continuing their offer with the purchase of a value basket and you'll receive a single scoop of custard for free. And La Note Deue will continue with the free entree with purchase, with the value of $15. Other businesses participating are BNR Dentists, Carmelite Carefree Village, The Goddard School, and Goers Dental. All Darien Chamber businesses are invited to participate in the Shop Local Shop Darien campaign. Keep your eye out for the decal on the door. In addition to our monthly Shop Local Shop Darien preferred offers, please remember to check out our hot deals page at www.darienchamber.com. Shop Local Shop Darien preferred cards can be purchased at City Hall for $5. The 26th Annual Darien Fest is a few weeks away. Opening ceremonies will begin at 5:45 with Mayor Weaver, Darien VFW Post 2838, Citizen of the Year Kathy Marques, and the Eisenhower Junior High Marching Band. Once again this year, we will have our Business Expo. Make sure to stop by to meet and greet Darien Chamber member businesses. On Friday night at 6:15, our gang hits the stage, followed by The Moods with a special guest and performance by Abraha Rayford. Saturday kicks off with our first annual pet parade. The viewing for the pet parade will be on the south end of the park. Also at noon, we have our Battle of the Bands Live, featuring The Island Dwellers, Postmodern Banter, and All System Goes. Radio Disney will broadcast live from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. Forget, Forget Hannah hits the stage at 5:45, followed by Aura at 8:30 p.m. Sunday at noon, we have the Hinsdale South ETA Sigma Steppers, who will perform, perform at noon, followed by Darien Idol Live at 12:30 p.m. At 2:00 p.m., the Keyboard Touch Band 10 Above will take the stage. Q Bar and Grill is sponsoring a bags tournament, which will also begin at 2:00. At 4:00 p.m., the Redmonds will hit the stage, followed by Darien's very own Andrew Salgado and his band at 7:00 p.m. Wendy City Amusements is offering unlimited ride specials on Saturday and Sunday from noon to 5:00 p.m. for $20 per person. Once again, Kid Buck's Game Show will be entertaining the children. 50/50 raffles will be sold by the Darien VFW Post 2838 during the entire fest. A heartfelt thank you to all of our partners, vendors, and sponsors that helped make this wonderful community event happen. Some upcoming events for the Chamber. The Wild Orchid Salon located at 7511 Lamont Road in the Chesnut Court Shopping Center will be celebrating their ribbon cutting ceremony on September 12th at 5:00 p.m. The Darien Chamber Commerce will be participating in the Darien Town Hall meeting on Thursday, September 26, 7:00 p.m. at Carriage Greens Country Club. At this time, I'd like to introduce the General Manager of Q Bar and Grill, Mr. Chris Room.
Uh, good evening. My name is Chris. About six months ago, I took over Q Bar and Grill for Bob Taft. And we've been working hand in hand with Claire for the last couple of months, getting involved with the Chamber, some networking events, things like that, including Darien Fest coming up. And she asked me tonight to come in and introduce myself, so everyone can hear my name and see my face. So, hello? She asked me to say a couple of things about Q today, because I know it's been here for 12, 13, 14 years altogether. And it's went through, not quite a year ago, a little bit of a remodel and a little bit of a facelift to get away from the billiard mentality. So the name changed to Bar and Grill last September. And we're a little bit more of a overall general place now, not just your billiard hall. We've increased the menu to steak sandwiches and some other items along those lines, a little bit more entertainment now, a little more family friendly with some booze section in the middle. Just trying to be, I guess, upcoming with the times, just to keep it fresh, but also to, as me and Claire have talked, a little bit more valuable to the city and assets than on and off it's been for years. So, just wanted to come by today and say thank you. And if there's any questions about myself or what's going on there, more than welcome to take them now, otherwise. More than welcome to come back in the future. I know you were talking about the gaming license a few minutes ago and myself and Bob have talked about it. He's very eager for it. But the same point, it's obviously a city's decision and we're looking forward to the final decision on that.
Chris, have you heard anything from the state regarding your application?
Uh, I have not. I know that Bob has sent it in. I have not heard the outcome on that yet, because I'm waiting on that outcome for my personal application to go in as well.
Your personal application, are you, you as the manager?
As a general manager, I would have to have myself with a gaming license as well, since I'll be on the facility all the time as well.
Oh, okay. Any, any questions for Chris?
Thank you guys again, and I look forward to seeing you all again.
Thank you.
I do.
Thanks, Chris.
And don't forget, you can use your Shop Local Shop Darien card at Q Bar and Grill.
Did you give me my Shop Local card?
It's $5.
I already paid her. I already paid her, but I can't remember. Did you give it to me or not?
But I, I owe you a, a little refund.
I know.
Yeah, you bought it, you were the first one to purchase it.
I know, I was the first one to purchase it, but I'll be darned if I can find it. What did I, what, if you gave it to me already?
Yeah, and I owe you money too, so I'll take care, I'll take care of it. You, you have it. You have it somewhere.
I have to think about the outfit I had on the day that I was at that event to see, maybe it's in that pocket, yeah.
Okay.
$5.
I've already, I've already given her, I gave her $10. She owes me money.
Yeah, so I owe you. I'm sorry?
When does it expire?
Um, July 1st, 2014.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so we're working with all the restaurants that participated to just extend the val, they were very excited. You know, they were, especially Chuck's, you know. So you just go there, show your card, and you get your 10% off.
Do you have any with you? I have $5.
I do in my purse, yeah. Okay, okay.
Can they buy, can they buy the cards at the different businesses?
I'm sorry?
Can they buy the cards at the different businesses?
Um, some, Zazo's is selling them. I know Chuck's wants to start selling them. Culvers is going to take some. Now that they're understanding it, because we're in our third month of this, so they're starting to understand the program now. They want to sell them there, so.
Yeah, in the beginning, it was too, we, the, the board felt it was too much of a burden on the businesses to try to market them. So now, I guess they're buying into it, yeah.
Right, because everybody's, you know, starting to use it and they're seeing the value of the card. So now, you know, of course, everybody wants to sell them and, and everybody wants to buy them, so.
Good.
Okay, next up, I would like to introduce Sean Lamb from the Darien Woodridge Fire District, who's going to talk about an event that he has coming up.
Hi, everyone, how are you? Uh, my name's Sean Lamb, with the Darien Woodridge Fire Protection District. I'm part of one of the bargaining members of Local 3437. This year, we kind of decided to take on a project. This is our first time doing it. We've taken on of doing a 5K walk benefiting St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. We chose a location where we felt that it was in our district and it meant enough that we wanted to do that to give back in our community especially. So we're going to be doing, in Meyer Woods, and then also the walk will be taking place in Old Field Oaks. What I have is actually some basic information, just to pass to you guys. And if everybody has any information, please, you know, feel free to ask me throughout now or after the session. The reason why we've decided to do this is me personally, I grew up in this area, very familiar with Woodridge, Downers Grove, and Darien. I participated in all the programs growing up as a child. And we have a lot of personal friends that have come down with cancer with their children and felt that this is just something that touches my heart, as well as a lot of other people. We chose St. Jude because basically they're one of the world's premier pediatric cancer research centers. Basically, they're the only pediatric cancer research center which no family ever pays for care that their child receives, which was really big, because obviously with how much healthcare costs these days, people can't do that for their kids. One of the more important things is, out of a lot of things that they do, 81 cents out of every dollar they received goes directly to the children. There's no other place that gives that much back to those kids. What we have is we're going to have free food, free activities for the kids. We're going to do certain things like an obstacle course for, like a firefighter obstacle course for kids and everybody else, face painting, most likely jump castles. And there's more to come within the next couple of weeks that we're going to be doing at Meyer Woods for this event. We have a lot of participation with this event, not only from our firefighters. Claire herself has stepped up to become one of our committee members and has been very crucial with helping me personally get this up and running, so thank you. We have some participation already from Hinsdale South and Downers Grove South in this event. We're also going to be reaching out to the other three school districts that we cover in Darien Woodridge, as well as also in the Woodridge area over with Jefferson and District 68 as well. We have some other things with, we're going to promote at Darien Fest. We're going to have a tent over there, kind of explain some of the things that we're going to do, encourage participation and everything from everybody, more so within, you know, the city of Darien. One of the other things we do have is we are, I wanted to make sure that this event was something that gives to everybody. Myself and a lot of the firefighters in our local have already gone to a lot of local businesses and tried to get their support. Everyone's been on board, they've been terrific. We have a lot of things that we're giving away to everybody in here. And it's from the village of Darien and Woodridge, mainly a lot of those places, so. Basically, one of the things that our committee has come up with, that has kind of come up, the only negative with this event is based on where this event is taking place, is parking. I've spoken with Mr. Marquesy this evening a little bit about some of the things and sent out, obviously emailed to you, Scott, Neil the Chief, and a couple of other people, if there were any concerns with this. My idea at this time is to be able to reach out to those residents who are right around Meyer Woods, North Terror Hill, South Terror Hill, and Brookridge. And be able to give them our flyer for our event and also give them some sort of a sheet of paper telling them, this is what's going on, on the day of. You know, maybe encourage them to participate, but at least to let them know, because I don't want to have all the parking or issues in that area and have, you know, your constituents be angry at you or us, you know. So if you guys had any questions on that, any concerns with anything, please feel free to ask me.
Well, Chief, will we need to take any action on putting up signs for parking? I, I'm sure we, we're going to allow parking along Old Field Road for this event if it overflows.
Correct.
Will we need to take any action in that regard?
Probably, yes ma'am.
Okay, we'll have to do some sort of signage.
Sean, you didn't mention the date. You might want, want to mention the date.
I'm sorry, thank you very much. September 28th, Saturday morning is the date. And I also have some flyers here with me, so if anybody would like to actually see them today, I'd be more than happy to show you.
Do, we probably need one for our entryway to put that up there? There is, okay.
Absolutely. On this, which also is in the front over there by you guys, there's a link directly on there, is to go to www.stjudevents.org backslash 3437. What that does is it takes you directly to the St. Jude site for this specific event. Anybody can donate directly to that or register as a walker and encourage participation that way as well.
Thank you. Any questions, Alderman MacIver?
Do you need volunteers for helping out during that event at all?
We will probably need volunteers to help out with that. That's one of the big reasons why I wanted to reach out to the local schools, especially the high schools.
A lot of Catholic, I, the reason I'm asking is because, like, the Catholic high schoolers need service hours and this would be a great event to volunteer and get some service time.
Correct, and that's one of the things that I had thought about with this, is to reach out that with the National Honor Societies. All them need those hours for the college and everything else. And we're going to welcome those people, whoever would like to come in to help us. Whether it's just they stand on the walk and hand out water to helping us set up, to doing whatever. I have already reached out to Our Lady of Peace. Looks like they're going to be posting that. And we're going to be also reaching out to some of the other churches as well and get in with them to start passing the word as well.
Sean, with the Darien Dash, the Lions Club assisted you a lot, Claire, I believe, with the Darien Dash. We can get the Lions Club involved, we got the Women's Club. You've got a lot of organizations within Darien that might be able to send a few volunteers. So it'd be nice if we get some information out to some of those, those groups as well.
Absolutely, and I believe you've reached out to some of them.
Yeah, and on my Facebook page, I have the link, and I know I'm friends with a lot of you. If you guys can share it, because, you know, we really need to get participation as far as walkers. And because it's a new event and, you know, we just really need to get the word out. So if you could just take what I put on there, the link, and just like share it with your friends, that would help start spreading the word, you know, to all of our friends and everything.
I, I have another question. Claire, you remember when we advertised Darien Fest, we put a banner up on 75th and Cass over there? Could this be an event where you could create a banner and put a banner up somewhere and maybe get permission from the city to put it up on the property over there?
Well, right now, my banners are going up sometime this week. The District 63 Foundation called and asked if they could take mine down and put theirs up for the, the, for the circus.
The Kelly, yeah, the Kelly.
So, do you even have banners?
No, one of the things that we would be able to get is actually one of our guys does have a connection with his father, has a business that makes banners and does certain things. Uh, I think what Mr. Marquesy was talking about is what we had talked about earlier this evening was, would we be able to put some of those signs out on some of the corners? Would there be an issue with that at all, so that we can promote it, maybe on some of the bigger corners like 75th and Lamont, 83rd, or, I'm sorry, 83rd Street and Lamont Road? But without, without in a way that it's going to affect anything that Claire's doing with Darien Fest or anybody else. Uh, we, we're going to be putting up some banners in front of our three fire stations, but we'd like to be able to try to put something up throughout to kind of help a little bit.
Yeah, some of those roads are not within our jurisdiction and you might want, we might have to go through Dan on that. Maybe the businesses, if we could move it back onto their private property, might be a better solution than asking the county to put up some of these banners.
Well, I think, I don't know, does anyone know when the circus is? My event will be done on the, my banners can come down on the 10th of September, the 9th of September. Then the circus, and then, if the circus is done, then we can leave those posts there and then you could just go put up the banners, you know, when the circus comes down.
For 63 Foundation?
And put up your banners.
Yeah, it's their, their circus, I, I think it's the same weekend, to be honest with you. I think it's, is it September 28th? That, is it that weekend?
Where's they're going to?
14th, it's 14th.
Oh, good, good, so it's not competing. It's the week after Darien Fest. Yeah. They're holding it at Argonne National Lab. I was able to hook them up with Argonne National Lab for the, the park area for the circus.
Okay, well, I think to make it easier, once the mine come down, the circus goes up. Then when the circus comes down, then yours can grow up. And we'll just, I'll help you with the paperwork where the locations are.
Sure, whatever.
And then, you know, all you got to do is fill out the paperwork.
Yeah, work with Dan as much as possible, so you, you know, you don't get yourself in trouble with the county or something, putting up a sign on their roadway. They're funny like that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, if you've, uh, do you have a handouts? Because, you know, I put one up, Christ the Servant Church is in Woodridge, right on Bowton, right down the street from where the walk's taking place. I could put one up there.
This is actually a flyer that was made personally just this weekend.
Okay. Thank you.
You want one too? Sorry. Did anybody have any further questions or?
Oh, somebody's willing to donate right now.
We're able to do this either online. One of the other things we do have as well that we're going to be passing out at Darien Fest is also a special events forum. Basically, if they raise $35 or more, there's a t-shirt, 75 or more, a sling tote, and $150 or more, they get like an on the go blanket. This is directly from St. Jude. This does not include any of the giveaways that our fire department, Claire, or anybody else has got from the local businesses. One of the things that's going to come up on our feed, as of right now, the person who does raise the most money for this individual online will receive a $500 gift card to the Cali-Harry Resort in Wisconsin Dells. So these are the kind of things that we are going to give out to the people who participate. And there'll be door prizes of giving out a lot of things like to hotels, Darien sports places, donated a lot of things. And there's a lot more things that we're going to start updating and start telling people that we have for them.
Madam Mayor, I misspoke. It's the 29th. It's at Argonne.
That's what I thought, yeah, I thought it was, it's in, in competition with that weekend. It's on a Sunday?
Yes, ma'am.
The circus? It's not the whole weekend, it's just one day?
It's, correct. It looks like it starts at 4:00, according to this.
On the 29th, on Sunday the 29th, okay, so yours is the 28th.
The 28th, Saturday, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Well, we'll work with Mary, we'll work with Mary Sullivan and we'll, oh, God.
Very good.
We won't put it anywhere near anything that has to do with any other events that are going on, because we don't want to take away from them either.
Okay, Sean, thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the forum.
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Let's move on to the city clerk's report.
And two things, Madam Mayor. City offices will be closed on Monday, September the 2nd, for the Labor Day holiday. And our next city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September the 3rd.
Let's move on to the city administrator's report.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Weaver. One item tonight, which is really an update on the video gaming ordinance that was approved by the city council on March 4th, 2013. The city council discussed that, really at several occasions, but took action on an ordinance that evening. And there was a lot of discussion that night, but really approved the ordinance, recognizing that there's a longer wait period for applicants that are interested in liquor establishments, that are interested in, in offering video gaming, which is now permitted by state statute. When the council approved, again, the ordinance, they asked staff to do a couple of things about six months out. And one was to contact or survey other communities to see if there was any correlation between increased police activity and the establishments that would offer video gaming. And the chief has done a survey, which I'll have him update the council and the public in just a couple of minutes. And secondly was, the council asked staff to develop and come up with a survey that we can send to residents. Because again, while the council approved this, recognizing a six or 12-month wait period, there was still an interest to find out what, what the opinion was from members of the community. And during the work session- And during the work session, we talked about this, and Mayor Weaver mentioned she's mentioned this issue at some of the events you've been at. And did not get a lot of response one way or the other. And I think maybe each alderman might have gotten some context. But it seems like since the council passed the ordinance, really has been fairly minimal. So there was some concerns with the survey that was put together. And admittedly, it was pretty difficult in coming up with a survey to try to determine how residents felt about this and how we would get the survey out. So in lieu of a survey, what the staff will be doing is putting out some general information on the Direct Connect that again, addresses video gaming, describes it a little bit in terms of the process and basically our situation. Asking that residents contact their aldermen any way possible, probably a lot of email again, maybe some phone calls. But with their opinions on video gaming and Darien. So we'll do that on Friday. To date, we have had four liquor license establishment in the community apply for a gaming license, which is done through the state of Illinois. Those four businesses are Q Bar, Chuck's Southern Comfort, Carriage Greens, and La Note. And then we have two more businesses now that have applied for liquor license. And there's a process that they'll need to go through. First, it's zoning. And then secondly, there's no liquor license available for those two establishments. So those two businesses will be forthcoming to the city council. So again, the city council is looking to get feedback from the members of the community and really make a final determination. While the ordinance was approved, it was still done recognizing that there wanted to be some additional review again in the six-month period. So Chief, could you please then just cover the survey you had sent out? And one of the things the council had asked is to add several more communities that we talked about in the Police Committee meeting and also the workshop. But Chief, you can just provide an overview of the survey, please. Thanks.
Yes, sir. I know the survey itself, the printed survey, is not very informative. Essentially, there were four questions asked of each of the departments surveyed. And that was whether there had been an increase in calls, an increase in criminal activity, increase in vehicular or pedestrian traffic, or an increase in complaints from citizens or any concerns expressed by citizens as a result of the video gaming issue. And the summarized version of that survey is what you see with that. So those are the specific questions that were asked. The, in addition to that, the council was asked, the Police Committee has asked that we survey some additional jurisdictions closer to Chicago that might have a higher volume of traffic, and we intend to do that and get that expedited.
Chief, in summary of this, you know, the aldermen have that in front of them. It was emailed to them. But I guess there was nothing we found from the survey in terms of communities seeing increased police activity associated with the gaming licenses. Is that a good summary?
There's been no increase in police activity. There was one jurisdiction that did report a higher than anticipated revenues, but that was it.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Okay, let's move on to Department head.
I'm sorry, Mayor, with that, I think there was a little discussion on expectations moving forward that maybe it's good to talk about now where the residents are on in terms of getting feedback from our Direct Connect and looking at this in some time period, you know, from now. Is that, I heard a couple of things discussed. I think we should probably reiterate that. Maybe again, look out in six months. Is that?
Well, I'm sure you're going to come up with your information on the additional municipalities relatively quickly. I'm making that assumption that we will be able to review them?
Yeah, for next council meeting, we'll bring back any information that we talked about tonight, the additional communities. And then anything that the council would receive back from the Direct Connect.
Do you want to, does the council feel that you want to set another date of six months? Or do you want to just wait to hear what these other municipalities are doing and then make our decision then? Alderman Marchese?
I think Alderman McIver mentioned that it might be something we'd bring up during our goal setting, if we do a goal setting in November. I think November would be a good time period to take a look at it again.
When do we do our goal setting? October?
We haven't said it yet, but typically late October, maybe early November depending, but in that time period.
It's fine with me if the council feels that way. Sure, okay. We'll put it on the goal setting. Sure. You're still going to come forward with the results of the review of Countryside and Berwin and those other, what other towns do we mention?
Brookfield.
Brookfield, okay.
You know, I'd like to apologize for the council for stepping out when this discussion was initiated earlier. I'd been given some information that there was someone in the parking lot who was, appeared to be either in distress or there for nefarious purposes. And I went out and checked it. And so that's why I stepped out of the meeting.
Did you find anything?
Someone who was waiting for someone in here.
Okay.
No, they're gone. But it wasn't a problem. That's exactly what we want the public to do when they see something, say something. So it was, it was very worthwhile and it was kind of what we expect the public to do.
Okay, okay. I won't make any comments on that one. Okay, thank you, Chief. Are there additional Department head reports?
Real quick, Mayor, in respect to the Emerald Ashbor, I just kind of want to give the city council an update to where we are, where we've been. If you recall, we started treating twenty-six hundred trees back in April. To date, we're at approximately, a little bit at the half, a little bit over the halfway mark. With that comes the removals. The removals to date have been approximately one hundred or in value of twenty-eight thousand dollars. Our budget calls out for a total of sixty thousand dollars. And we currently have to take down, what we have taken down, plus what else is to be initiated, an amount of ninety-two thousand three hundred dollars. So with that said, we're going to have a shortfall of approximately thirty-two thousand dollars. Again, this is something that was not anticipated, but residents will notice that when there's red marks on the trees, that means they are coming down. And this is all in relationship to the Emerald Ashbor. With that said, we're looking at potentially bringing this back to the committee here within Municipal Services, maybe even followed by Admin Finance. And one of the other things that we're looking at is to determine whether or not these trees can wait till May of two thousand and fourteen so we can budget for them. So we're going to make sure when we say can wait, are they a hazard if they remain throughout between now and April or May of next year? That's all I have, Mayor.
You're going to talk to an expert to find out if they can wait? Is that what you're going to do?
That's part of it.
Coming up on the winter months and stuff?
Yes, I know what we've seen in the past, so many other trees that have died and we've left them in place for a period of time, six months or so. There's been some incidences of tree branches falling down, so there is some potential liability that we could be looking at. Again, we want to make sure how sturdy is an ash tree once it is deceased.
Deceased, okay, diseased. Alderman Seifert?
Mine's off topic, though. Did you have something on topic?
Oh, on the Emerald Ashbor?
In Farmingdale South, I have seventeen trees coming down in a two-block radius. At ninety-two thousand, I understand we're going over budget, which makes sense. I'm worried about next year. How, any, obviously, we don't have a crystal ball. But if we're going to increase it this year, we're going to probably run into that same issue for next year too at the same time.
Well.
Actually, at this point, with what we've treated, I'm very satisfied with what I'm seeing. If you look at the ones that have been treated, you're seeing them perk up a little bit.
I was going to ask about that. They look really funky.
Right, and the funkiness is probably that you're seeing more of a bushy area towards the lower portion of the tree. And up on top, you'll see some dead branches that probably won't come back. But at the same time, you're starting to see a little more, I guess, it's living, life, yes. And with that said, Mr. Corn gave me an article this evening out from the Wall Street Journal that there's additional hope for the Emerald Ashbor to eradicate it, to eradicate it. And that's they're going to be introducing, it looks like some type of wasps. And again, this is all very preliminary information. I just took a read through this. So I want to be careful as I put wasps right out there, along with a couple of birds. One of them is the woodpecker, a couple of different species of woodpeckers that go after these bugs. So, you know, not only will we be eradicating it, Mother Nature will be helping, hopefully in the forest preserves where they're currently not treating them.
Just to follow up on this, Dan, one of the things you and I talked about was the number of trees you have a very good estimate on in terms of what needs to be removed. The challenge is the removal of these trees is based on the diameter of the tree. So while you had an inventory of what trees needed to come down and you used an average of the diameter, I think you're finding that a portion of the trees that need to come down are probably larger than you might have estimated, which results in a higher expense per tree.
Correct. And basically, when we started the program, while we took an inventory of how many trees we had, we did not go and identify that, okay, this tree is fourteen inches, sixteen inches, forty inches, whatever the case is. So what we did is we used an average of twenty, what's referred to as twenty diameter by height inches. And that was a good representative sample. Obviously, again, for us to be able to pinpoint how many trees were going to be taken down, that was a little difficult if, you know, not difficult at best at all.
Well, you're talking possibly spending ninety thousand. We budgeted sixty thousand, so it's a shortfall of thirty, approximately thirty thousand.
Correct. And we have like basically another thousand trees left to treat. So of those thousand, we're going to try to get a better representative sample of the areas that we have so we can come back to the committee here in City Council with a good number here to finish the program up if we decide to move forward with it for this year.
Treasurer Clark?
Dan, I thought when we were talking about the EAB program initially, you indicated for the treatment that it would have to be done by about the end of August when the SAP runs. And you indicated we're only fifty percent complete. Can we even treat the balance of them?
The answer, the answer right now is yes. Due to some of the cool summer that we've had. The, and the way it works is Arbors, John Carr, when the tree is, the tree is a certain diameter and he figures out, okay, this tree is X amount and needs so many holes or so many holes you have to drill to inject this insecticide. Once he drills the holes, inserts the gun, as it's referred to as, it basically shoots and sucks up the insecticide. If the tree was not taking it, or if a tree was not further, I guess, being neutri, not neutralized, but basically taking the insecticide up, it would not take it because the tree needs to basically work with the insecticide. So in other words, the insecticide has to be able to be pulled by the tree. So the answer is yes, and kind of giving a technical explanation there, but right now, it's still good.
And you're going to get them all treated by the end of August?
That's the goal, right. And it could happen where all of a sudden, the tree will not take for whatever reason, stopped taking the nutrients from the ground. But again, as soon as we're, that's identified, John will bring that back to us as well.
And if that happens, would we stop treatment at that point? So there could be a savings from the treatment this year.
Well, that, that will be the case.
That means we have to take the tree down, yeah.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for you on that. We might have to take the tree down because it might not make it until next year.
Yeah, there is a small difference because if there's some trees, Dan, that you figure you'll have to take down, then you won't spend the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. And that'll, you'll take into a, I think that's kind of what I'm hearing. It'll be a little bit of a trade-off.
Right, there's a lot of.
Taking down the tree is more expensive than the treatment.
Yeah, there's about a five-thousand-dollar savings right now from the insecticide program.
Any other questions for staff? Alderman Kenny?
So if we go and talk to the Arbors and they're saying we can put this off until, for six months, is there a chance of saving our, saving our budget or no?
The answer is yes.
That's the point, yeah.
When we say saving our budget, I'm not going over it?
Not spending the thirty thousand, yeah.
Not, you know, we're going to definitely be over budget no matter what happens.
There's some savings that we've realized already with some of the programs that's been completed this year. And they're preliminary savings, but we have identified a couple of sources.
But Dan, I think, maybe I heard wrong, but there is a chance that if we can determine to ask for the additional monies in next year's budget and then not be over this year?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, that's still, it's not automatically yet. We're to the point now where we've seen how many, how many we've had to take down, recognize we're hitting that budget limit. And that's why Dan's bringing it up now to see if that's something the council would, and we think we should finish up this year or we're able to hold off until next year.
Alderman Seifert?
Just to change topic, what you and I spoke briefly about before the meeting regarding Chase Bank. And that if you could just reiterate to everybody that they're still on target for next week as far as you know? Because I'm sure, I don't know if anybody else saw, there's a Chase going up.
Sixty-third and Cass.
What's that?
There's a Chase going up at Sixty-third and Cass, next to Papa Ficero. So I know I had a couple of people ask me like, are we not getting our Chase anymore because that one's going up?
As far as we know, as of last week or week and a half ago, Chase was still targeted to be coming in on the twenty-fifth.
It's, that's a Sunday, but.
Well, the week of, yes, the week of the twenty-fifth. That's what the target date was set for.
And then that was actually from the contractor doing the work. That wasn't from corporate Chase. So they're, the contractor's gearing up, picked up his permits, and is the one we're now dealing with.
Brian, were you able to get, talk to them about signage? I know you and I talked about that last week.
Yeah, I had, Dan and I talked, and I don't know if, I don't know their intentions, Dan. I don't know if we've hit, if we've reached out to them in terms of a sign they'll put out coming soon or anything.
There was basically when we did it for Target, Target, excuse me, Walmart, we also did it for Chase too. So obviously Walmart did not, they put up something else, you know, construction, but.
But we haven't heard back if they're going to put up a sign.
Are they, did Walmart cordon off that portion of the parking lot for construction purposes or are they resurfacing?
Both.
Okay.
As I say, that's a major section that it cut out of.
There's going to be a lot of equipment, semi, or I should say trailers coming in there for the trades.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Let's move on to the Treasurer's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number thirteen fourteen oh seven in the amount of six-hundred-sixteen thousand, three-hundred-twenty dollars and sixty-one cents from the listed funds. Payroll for the period ended August eighth in the amount of two-hundred-fifty-two thousand, two-hundred-sixty-eight dollars and seventy-eight cents. For a total to be approved of eight-hundred-sixty-eight thousand, five-hundred-eighty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Do we have a motion to approve? Alderman Kenny, seconded by Alderman Seifert. Discussion? The roll, please.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Marchese?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All items, the, the report has been approved. Let's move to standing committee reports. Do any of the Chairman head reports? Alderman Seifert? Excuse me, Alderman Shower?
Yes. Our next Admin Finance meeting will be Tuesday, September third, at six P.M. in the upstairs meeting room.
Alderman Marchese?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Gombach mentioned this on the fifth, but I'll reiterate it that we're meeting, next Municipal Services meeting is next Monday, August twenty-sixth, six-thirty here in the council chambers. And I also wanted to mention that at our last meeting, we approved the minutes of the June twenty-fourth Municipal Services meeting. And that's been submitted for publication.
Alderman McIver?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We, at tonight's Police Committee meeting, we approved the minutes of the July fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen Police Committee meeting. Brian will be passing those along. We had a typo, so those will be, but the minutes were approved. And our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, September sixteenth, at six P.M. here in the council chambers.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, in addition to Alderman Shower mentioning the Admin Finance Committee meeting, this will be the meeting where the auditor's there to present the draft audit. It's, it's a, you know, a thick document. I think we've emailed that out to the committee members to look at. If anybody wants to view the draft, certainly when the committee pack gets out, they could review it online. If, at this point, anybody wants a hard copy, we could certainly make, make the hard copy, recognizing that there'll be some changes because it's not the ninety percent audit that's completed, but there's a couple of cleanup and page numbers and things. But we'll have that on next agenda.
Treasurer Clark?
And the final audit will be brought before the complete council when it's completed.
Right. And let's move to questions and comments regarding the agenda items. Does any of the aldermen have a question on any of the agenda items tonight? I'd like to open it up to the floor if anyone on the counts on the floor would like to address any of the items on the agenda this evening. Let's move to old business. There being no old business, I'll move right to consent agenda. And thankfully, there's only three items this evening. So the first one is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Delta Dental to renew the employee dental insurance program through October first, two thousand and fifteen. Item B is a motion to approve the recommendation to release executive session minutes that are no longer, that no longer require confidentiality. Item C is a motion to grant a waiver of the Raffa License Bond Requirement for the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the U.S. for the Darien Memorial post twenty-eight thirty-eight. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Marchese, seconded by Alderman McIver. The roll, please.
Marchese?
Aye.
McIver?
Aye.
Shower?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
All items have been approved. The next item is under new business. We have item A, motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an amendment to the city administrator agreement between the city of Darien and Bryan Vanna. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Shower, seconded by Alderman Marchese. Discussion? Alderman Belkey?
Yes, I wanted to thank Brian for some of the updates that he did for all his goals. He kept us periodically updated on some of the initiatives that he was working on and his successes to those. He also provided some neighboring communities that benchmarking as best as we could to. He also provided some neighboring communities that benchmarking as best as we could to see where his salary was compared to some of our neighboring comparisons. And it turns out in that study that he did where he's paid a little bit lower than the average. Having said that, though, I feel that his, his package is still favorable and very competitive in the market. There was a recent study, if anybody's interested, in the Daily Herald that just got recently updated in, in August here, and from all the communities, out of 74 communities that they published, we would be around number 24 out of the 74. So I wanted to say that from a strictly a financial standpoint position, I'm not in favor of the additional 2% in addition to a merit of $1,500, and that $1,500 has not been awarded to him in the last two years, and I felt that that wasn't the right time to bring it up again.
Any other discussion?
I think I've seen Brian's weights and gold, with me being a new kid on the block, and to point that I can pick up the phone, pretty much call him at any time, day or night, and he's made my transition to this very easy, and, you know, and, you know, based on what, you know, Tina just, you know, alluded to, I, you know, I can't see him, you know, not deserving that.
Any other discussion? Then the roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Belkey?
No.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Seifert?
No.
Five ayes and two nays. The motion has been approved. Item B, under new business, is a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 150, which is our Public Works Division, and the city of Darien. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman, Shower, seconded by Alderman, MacIver? Discussion?
Just, I'm sorry, a question, Mayor. We included the contract as in the marked up version, so hopefully everybody was, had asked for that and is very clear on all the changes. We wanted to make sure that was clearly illustrated. That's all.
Very good. All the roll, please. Shower?
Aye.
MacIver?
Aye.
Belkey?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Marques?
Aye.
Seifert?
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays. A motion has been approved. Item 18 is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Alderman, Marques?
As the last vote occurred, I just thought about an article that was in the Tribune today. I don't know if anybody read it. It was on Bolingbrook, and Mayor Roger Clare, maybe you read it.
I did, I certainly did.
And it spoke to the idea that over three years, they haven't had a dissenting vote on any of the motions from the entire council. And the article gave you both a negative and a positive side to that, and Roger had some answers and responses, which I felt were quite interesting. But with our five to two vote on Brian's contract, it's nice to know that we do, we have disagreements from time to time, so I guess we do really represent the way we really feel.
Well, I think it points out that there's absolutely no discussion whatsoever in their meetings, too. So, so at least we can certainly find that as something we do quite well.
I don't know, Joe, also, if it mentioned the article, but I don't know that they have committees of the city council.
It did mention that, but, yeah, they pretty much rubber stamp everything, too, so, yeah. But, you know, when I grow up, I want to be just like Mayor Clare.
I saw, I saw what he had in his campaign fund, and I thought.
Oh, my gosh.
Unbelievable.
And they have no problem with him accepting money from all the businesses that do business with the city, with the village, so it's amazing, amazing. Any other announcements from the council? I'd love to open it up to the floor if anyone would like to speak to the council.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As I'm becoming a regular agenda item, I believe, in the council, you all know who I am, but for the public watching in here tonight, my name is Matt Goodwin, the commander of the Darien VFW. And since we are the newest tenants of the city, as our landlords and lessors, I felt it was appropriate to come here tonight and kind of give you an update as to where we're at with the Darien VFW's first post home in 28 years. We have since moved in, and we are already underway with some of the renovations to the, to that unit there in the Heritage Center. A lot of outpouring of support from both the community and our membership as well. I have a constant stream of members coming in that want to paint and pull wire because they're retired electricians, and they've sort of missed that, that part of their lives, and they're happy to help out and do those sorts of things, so.
He's looking at Dan Gombach there.
We'll talk later, Matt.
Nothing, nothing permit wa, I will assure you that one of the things, as commander, I have, I have made sure that we want to be above board with everything that we're doing in there, and anything that we do that may require a permit, I am quite eyeballing that. I promise you, no wire's been pulled. Maybe some light bulbs have been changed.
It was the terminology that you used, so excuse me.
I realize that, and I apologize. I, I got the, I felt the glare as I said that, so. But we are moving along, and I do have offer from Clare in the Chamber of Commerce that once we're up and running to have a ribbon cutting, and I certainly want to hold that event, and we will, and you all will certainly be invited to that, and I appreciate the support for that. As Clare mentioned earlier, we, we are offering our 50/50 raffle again this year at Darienfest. Tickets are a dollar a piece, or six for five, and all that money that we raise there goes back into our programs and the operation of our posts. That is what we use as our operating expense throughout the year, so any of our mailings that go out, any of the things that we do internally, it helps support that, and any remaining funds from that go directly into what our programs are, whether it be our veteran support, our community activities that we do, such as potentially sponsoring the St. Jude's Walk that you heard tonight, or any of our scholarship or school programs that we have. Which leads me into that exact topic. This is the time of year that we do begin pushing very heavily with the beginning of school. Our two school programs that we have are our scholarship opportunities. The first is the element, excuse me, the middle school essay contest called the Patriots' Pen Essay Contest. This is where a student sixth through eighth grade gets the opportunity to write an essay and have it judged in a blind judging by our post and members of the community as well who volunteer to help us with that. And the winner of that scholarship, or that essay contest at the national level can win up to $5,000 and a trip to Washington, DC. All expenses paid by the VFW for that. And the topic is what patriotism means to me. So they'll write a three to 400-word essay on that and turn it in to us. And our other program is the High School Voice of Democracy program. It's a speech program where the student will write a speech and record it on CD, or I think they're even going up to MP3s and podcasts this year on those things, so we'll have to make sure our guys have the technology available to do those. But the topic of our Voice of Democracy program is why I'm optimistic about our nation's future. And the winners there, again, will be winners that our post will be forwarded on to district, state, and national levels, where the national winner can win up to $30,000 at a first-place prize. And they have prizes all the way down, I think, to even the 25th or further down the line wins $1,000 at the national level, and there's monetary prizes from the post level all the way up to national in each of those categories. A new contest for us this year, something that we're introducing to the Darien community is called the Poppy Display Contest. As you know, we distribute these poppies every year, and these are assembled by disabled and hospitalized veterans in the nation's VA homes, and they receive money for these things to spend on each, for each one that they make, they receive money to spend in the canteen or the shops at these VA hospitals to provide them some comfort and some level of feeling of normalcy in the hospitals.